Every time I do that, I get a little tucker at myself. I like to say good evening to everyone and welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's Board of Trustees meeting. Today is May 9th and it's approximately 6:05. And I see so many of us here today this evening and I really want to thank you for coming and spending your time with us. And we do have so very, very much to be proud of today. This meeting is officially called to order. We have a quorum established. We do have us with us this evening. To my left, Dr. Cynthia Brown, Mrs. Talisa Young, Dr. Joe Schumay, Mr. Fred Sparks, and myself, Yvonne Cox. And we all welcome you. At this time, I'd offer thee invocation. If you please bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, Maker and Creator of all good and perfect gifts that come from above, Father, I stretch my hand to you. I pray that you stay with us today, dear Lord. You are our strength. You're the strength like no other. Dear Lord, keep the Columbus Municipal School District in mind when you pour out your blessings. I pray our district is brought back to life in the way that only Christ Jesus can do it. Bind us together as we meet here tonight. Help us to remember that what we say and do here today will be echoed throughout generations to come. This I ask in the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Amen. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll move to item number three, Adoption of the Agenda, Policy BBB, Policy BCBD, requesting a motion to adopt our agenda.
Go move.
The motion has been made by Mr. Sparks requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young. End discussion. If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Now we'll move to item four, Dr. LeBott, School, Facility, and Staff Recognitions.
It's a privilege today to recognize some of our many scholars of Columbus High School who have done great work in our mission to have college career and enlistment prepare students. On behalf of the Columbus Municipal School District, we would like to recognize you first with our dual enrollment students. These students completed all EMC classes, four classes with a perfect 4.0. We'd like to recognize the following students. Laquavious Brown.[1184.01][1184.01](applause) Courtney Chandler.[1186.01][1186.01](applause) Jaquilia Collins.[1188.01][1188.01](applause) Waheya Cunningham.[1190.01][1190.01](applause) Kelis Curry.[1192.01][1192.01](applause) Henry Dismuks.[1194.01][1194.01](applause) Shantel Lucius.[1196.01][1196.01](applause) Leila Sparks.[1198.01][1198.01](applause) Shamaya Spruell.[1200.01][1200.01](applause) Madison Turner.[1202.01][1202.01](applause) Alexia Bowdys.[1204.01][1204.01](applause) Kinzaria Williams.[1206.01][1206.01](applause) This is a commitment of hard-working teachers and the outstanding family members that we have in this community. At this time, I'm going to try to get them together to take a picture and then we'd like to get a picture with the parents also because we know you've worked hard to make sure they stay academically sound, correct? All right, so y'all want to help me coordinate? Y'all get on both sides and then we'll get one with the family. Y'all got a 4.0. I know y'all figured it out. Mary, is that good? You got, you can get me all of them? Yes, please, please. They're being a little shy. Got another one? Oh, yeah. I'll grab them. Yeah, we'll do all national board, so okay, because that's career. Then we'll do their families.[1276.26][1276.26](audience clapping) And Mary, could you step outside and have their family, take a picture with the family? Okay, thank you. Congratulations again. As we work on our mission for our students to be workforce and career-ready, we'd like to recognize the highest score on the National Certification Test for Career and Technical Education. At this time, we'd like to recognize the following scholars. Madison Leach, congratulations.[1340.26][1340.26](applause) Tanaya Strong.[1342.26][1342.26](applause) Seth German.[1344.26][1344.26](applause) And this is culinary arts, I apologize. Next we'll have Advanced Medical Technology, Gabrielle Benson.[1347.26][1347.26](applause) Anna Dohr.[1349.26][1349.26](applause) Lee Asia Holmes.[1351.26][1351.26](applause) Sharuti Patel.[1353.26][1353.26](applause) Demijee Bonner.[1355.26][1355.26](applause) Kirstian Wetherby.[1357.26][1357.26](applause) And Trin Williams.[1359.26][1359.26](applause) All right, we're going to do a picture for all of our workforce and career highest scores. Let you get behind the group. Thelma, you want to coordinate? All right. (inaudible) If we could do a picture with the families that are here, if they can go in the hallway, with your parents if they're here, I apologize. We'll make sure we get a picture with families. And celebrate as accomplishment for everyone, so thank you. At this time, we'd like to recognize our enlistment and military-prepared scholars who have scored the highest score on the ASFAB test and we'll be selecting the military branch of their choice. First we have Kanaya. At this time, I'm going to try to get them together to take a picture, and then we'd like to get a picture with the parents also, because we know you've worked hard to make sure they stay academically sound, correct? All right, so y'all want to help me coordinate? Y'all get in front of them, walk down a little bit. All right, oh, the board, yeah. Y'all can get on both sides, and then we'll get one with the family. Y'all got a 4.0, I know y'all figured it out. Mary, is that good? You can get y'all on. Yes, please, please, they're being a little shy. Yeah, we'll do all national board certification, because that's career. Then we'll do their families. Congratulations. Mary, can you step outside and have their family, take a picture with the family? Okay, thank you. Congratulations again. As we work on our mission for our students to be workforce and career-ready, we'd like to recognize the highest score on the National Certification Test for Career and Technical Education. At this time, we'd like to recognize the following scholars. Madison Leach, congratulations. Tanaya Strong. Seth German. And this is culinary arts, I apologize. Next, we'll have Advanced Medical Technology, Gabrielle Benson. Anna Dohr. Ne'asia Holmes. Sharuti Patel. Demijee Bonner. Did I get it right? Kirstian Wetherby. And Trin Williams. All right, we're going to do a picture for all of our workforce and career highest scores. Let you get behind the group. Thelma, you want to coordinate? All right. If we could do a picture with the families that are here, if they can go in the hallway, with your parents, if they're here, I apologize. We'll make sure we get a picture with families. It celebrates accomplishment for everyone, so, thank you. At this time, we'd like to recognize our enlistment and military-prepared scholars who have scored the highest score on the ASFAB test, and will be selecting the the military branch of their choice. First, we have Kanaya Conghius. Hope I got that right. Another scholar, Kelis Curry. Asia Dos. Jaquavious Gandy. Jeremy Harris. Rihanna Henry. Tycarious Hughes. Summer Neal. Kelby Miller. Curtis Shambly. Cameron Smith. Kyle Thomas. At this time, we'll get a photo of all of our enlistment scholars, and with their, the board, and then with their families. If you can get another picture outside with your families, your families here, the whole group, if y'all can go and take a picture with your families. Thank you for your hard work. At this time, it's important for us to recognize the great people in this great community, the city of Columbus, and how hard the community works to promote school. We know a healthy community is a healthy school district, and we want to acknowledge the service of Ms. Margaret Arnold, who has volunteered with the Columbus Municipal School District since the early '90. I hadn't had time to personally meet you, but I want to say thank you, and we appreciate all the work you've done for children and families over the last three decades. It's an honor to meet you, ma'am. Did you want to say anything? You sure? Sure, you want to say anything, buddy? All right, I'm sorry. All right, okay, all right. Get a picture. At this time, I'd like to recognize the talented Chelsea Petty, one of our creative art teachers, who this weekend received the, was an inaugural class of the Graduate from the Mississippi University of Women, a Master of Fine Arts in Theater and Education. I have not seen as a creative woman as this person in front of me, and I'm so proud of you, and congratulations on your endeavors, and we hope that you continue to use your talent in the Columbus Municipal School District as we focus on the visual and performing arts. Congratulations. We'd like to recognize one of our enlistment scholars, Ms. Kanaya Conghius. Congratulations.
Now, we're at item five, our strategic plan, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Tim Martin from the Mississippi School Board Association. Good evening, and welcome to Columbus School District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I bring greetings on behalf of Ms. Denotus Jackson, our Executive Director from Mississippi School Board Association, and it's great to be back with you. I enjoyed my time with you at the end of January, and remember our last activity that we did? It had a vegetable. Or, I guess it's a vegetable. Had a potato. And remember, some of you struggled, some of you struggled to do that, and we had the potato that you put a straw through. And our motto, our message with that was what? Follow through.
Follow through.
Follow through, follow through.
Follow through.
A strategic plan is only as good as the follow-through and carrying it out. If you have, you could have the most beautiful written strategic plan that's ever been created, but if it's not put into action, it's just words on a page. And so, it has to be lived out, day by day, in the district and through that. And so, I'm here tonight just to bring greetings, also to tell you that your superintendent and her staff have followed through on their part of the work. They have taken the goals that we derived in January. Remember, we made those around an acronym of what? Drive, the word drive. And so, the D stood for Develop Data-Driven Decisions. The R, I'll have to look at them. The R, Recruit and Retain Highly Effective Teachers and Staff Throughout the District. The I was Innovate Strategies to Improve Parental and Community Engagement. The V was Value Fiscal Prudence and Transparency. And then, the E was Establish a Safe Environment for All Students and Staff. So, you've got wonderful goals there in this plan. And we came up with a new mission statement and a new vision statement. And your vision statement is one that I think the whole, the district, everyone in the district that are employees, but I think the community at large can get behind. It's very simple, you can understand it. Student-centered, excellence-driven. And if every person in this district, beginning with board members, down to the superintendent, down to all the employees, will, every day that I'm going to go to work, every day that I'm going to represent Columbus Municipal School District, my focus is going to be students first, student-centered, and I'm going to be excellence-driven. If we'll do those two things, we're going to see great things in Columbus Municipal School District. And so, we came up with those goals, those five goals, that weekend, and we set the staff and gave the charge to Dr. Labott and her staff to come up with action steps for each one of those goals. And so, they have, they've done that in a busy, busy time of year. The spring is always the busiest time in a school district, getting ready for state tests, and we're in the midst of state testing right now. But they have done their work, and we're here to present the draft to you tonight. You have a copy of that. And there's really not a need for you to take a vote. I think Dr. Labott, later in her time, will go over the specifics of the action steps with you, and you will be able to see those and look at those. And then, either in June or your July meeting, you will ratify this, and this will become your strategic plan going into effect for the '22-'23 school year for the next five years. Now, that doesn't mean that this is a document that's written in stone that we can't, it is a breathing, living document. And so, if we meet one of these goals, then we cross it out, and we add another goal to it, we add another action step to it, and we continually come back to this. And that's one of the downfalls sometimes of strategic planning. It's never finished. It's never complete. You're always trying to redo that circle of excellence, and you're striving, striving to get better and better and better incrementally. So, you have some, some things here that are far-reaching, some things that you as board members will look at and say, ah, okay, you know, maybe. You know, look at those, you'll discuss those, and then, when you ratify that, then we want to make this a beautiful document. So, once you've ratified it, I'm going to ask Dr. Labott to send us some graphics, some pictures of students and whatever. We will get our graphic arts people, and we will make this a beautiful document that you can display on your website and in your schools and going forward, if you'd be able to use. But this will drive the work of your district. This will drive the work of the board. Remember, we talked about that weekend? There's really two lanes, and the board is in the what lane. You tell what needs to be done, and that's what we're talking about, a strategic plan, your goals. These are the things we need to accomplish. What needs to happen? The superintendent and the staff are in the how lane. You don't really care how it gets done, as long as it gets done. It might, you, you as, you might, as a board member, say, well, I would have done it differently. That doesn't matter. You're in the what phase, and you tell the superintendent, and she relays your message to the rest of the staff, this is what we're about, this is what we're going to accomplish. And then, they are in the lane of how to get it done. And so, then this becomes the template, so to speak, for her evaluation. And then, it becomes also the template for her to use to evaluate her principals, her central office staff, and everyone else in the district. And when that happens, magic happens. Magic happens in a district, because things get done. What gets measured, gets done. And so, when you measure it and you come up with it, then great things are here. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm at your leisure. Board members?
Well, first of all, I would like to say thank you very much for the time and effort that you've put into this document and working with Dr. Labott, and as well as the board. I thoroughly enjoyed the training that you did, the two nights, no, it was the evening and the morning. And it really brought light to exactly as to where we are, and it gave us some direction. It gave me direction as to where we're going and how to go about getting there. And I really do thank you, and I appreciate you for it.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add to what Ms. Cox said. Also, the other folks that participated, we had parents, we had members of the community, of course, we had staff, and I think it, you did a super job pulling everybody together, because these things can turn into a lot of blah-blah that never goes anywhere, but you kept us on track, and I love the potato thing. I have not tried it again, but I may have to.
Well, I will leave you with those words. Follow through, follow through. Because if you don't take this and follow through on putting it into action, then, you know, the magic doesn't happen. But when you follow through and you begin to put these things into action, you put action behind your words, then magic happens, and you will see great things in your district. We're here to continue to support you, Dr. Labott, you know that. As we move forward, if you need us in any way, just reach out to us, and I thank y'all for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, we'll move to item six, which is Close Determination for Executive Session Policy BCBK. Requesting a motion.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. We are in consideration for executive session. We ask if our audience will step outside a moment for us, please?
...the minute, we'll look at number one, April 6th minute, and number two, April 11th minute. And on number three, requesting a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second. I'll make the second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. I hate to be moving right along you all, we got a long agenda. All right, moving on to item B, trustees, district review. Oh, that was a great conference. Trustees, would you all like to just give a quick update if you will, please?
Okay. I guess I'll go first there. Yes, it was, it was very informative. I was able to attend virtually on both Monday and Tuesday sessions. And some of the things that really stuck out to me was in the discussion about the First Amendment. They had a few cases and things of that nature where it seemed as though it was a slam dunk. And as it turned out, free speech is real. Depending on how it's used and what exactly is said, it's a play on the words. Also, one of the remedies that was shared was that the presenter shared a story about a child that was being bullied virtually, so to speak, with the cell phone. So he advised the parent, just take the cell phone and be the parent. And, you know, they went on, you know, to discuss the importance of parents actually parenting the children as opposed to succumbing to the things that are influencing them. Although there was a brief discussion about consolidating schools as well as, let's see here, the importance of having cybersecurity in place to protect your systems and things of that nature. And like I said, it was, it was, it's a lot of information that was discussed, but I'll leave some for the ladies.
You say that now.
Yeah.
For the ladies, Dr. Brown?
Mr. Scott's cut is pretty good, but the part that I enjoyed the most was understanding the Mississippi ethics laws. And that's always important to really know what is right and what's wrong. And it was a great conference. Keith.
You still?
The hot topic.
Jim Keith.
Jim Keith.
Jim Keith.
He's always great, very knowledgeable, full of wisdom. He's been there a long time, and I always enjoy him. He always has something good and educational and important to say. And I appreciate being able to go to that conference, thank you.
Jim Keith is who attorneys call when we get stuck.
That's right. Oh, me. Well, you know, the part that stayed, that stayed with me is something that I've been doing some reading on, and it's remediating special needs and the low performance in students. And Ms. Day, the attorney, Cassandra, yeah, she, she presented on this. And she talked about remediation and recovery services for our children. And one thing that she brought out, that brought light to me, and I, you know, I'm gonna write it down. Said two years into COVID and still dealing with the effects. You know, virtual learning, school closing, and all of these other things that are going on. From math and reading decreases by 50%, causing more and more of our children that didn't need special education to be referred for special ed services or FIVL four services, which makes special education more what, more complex than IDEA than it actually already is. When you look at the learning losses and the educational gaps. And then we as parents, we always want what, educational benefits. But how do we actually offer that? So I really did listen in depth to Ms. Day because she always has a good word to give you on the legal part, but she understands IDEA very thoroughly. And I, I enjoyed the whole conference anyway. I guess I'm just into that, in that mode, legislator and policies. And thank you all very much for listening. We'll move right on. Did we have any other board members want to make a comment?
I didn't attend, thank you.
Yeah, I had to just refresh my, you know, my memory real quick. Now we'll move to item number two. Consideration, discussion and consideration of our capital improvement plan for CMSD, Mr. Stephen Little. Good evening, Mr. Little, how are you?
Good and very well.
Thank you.
On our list, some open POs that we still have, the JB Construction, the high school, you know, they took down the old set of bleachers that were there. And we're gonna remove the two buildings. I've not been able to get in contact with them, bleachers are gone, but the buildings are still there. I'd rather get the buildings moved, or we're gonna have to move on somewhere else if I can ever get them on the phone. Uh, smart security and technology, that's still the intercom system at the high school. We have been waiting on a module to come in, it has came in, thanks to JC for pushing ceasefire. They, we've got it, we just have to have it installed. That is the next, the next step. We also have another smart security on the cameras at Franklin Academy. They have very few cameras left to mount. We have cameras inside and all around the outside watching everything now. But they have just a few more cameras and they'll be completed with that job. Jay Morgan, that's at Franklin, that's the woodwork on the rotten wood that they'll be replacing. They were working with the roofers, that's another part, is the roofing project is going good. They're kinda at a standstill point right now. Jay Morgan will be here the middle to the end of the month to start replacing the rotten wood that is up around the top. And as they're doing that, copper top will come back and line the gutters as they work their way around, they're, they're working together on that project. The capital improvement list that we had, you know, we've had for quite some time.
Yes, sir.
I updated it today, I have not seen it. We'll send it before, because there's a few more things that we're gonna do before next month. And I'll have it updated and sent in. But one of them is the wires that were running across the front of Franklin, they are gone. Once again, thanks to JC for helping me out with that, finding out what those wires went to and all that. So they are gone, they were obsolete, they were just hanging there. Wasn't even being used for anything, so they're, they're gone. We're PMing some AC units right now, we're washing the coals out, that'll help prolong the life of them. We're just trying to work around testing as that goes, that's a major project we try to do every year. We've got some painting that we're gonna do this summer. Stokes Beard, the inside will be painted there, we have several classrooms at Franklin. We're gonna try to get painted and some at sale, we're working on getting some prices right now. This time of year, what I'm doing is I'm going through the buildings. We get lists from principals of things that they would like to see completed at their school during summertime. But I always walk through, you know, I can find some things that they didn't find, that they may see things that I don't see. So I make a list, and then that's what we do a lot of during the summer, work off their list and my list also. So that's pretty much where we're at right now as far as maintenance goes. Do you have any questions?
Just thank you, no questions, but thank you again for staying on top of these things. Because, I mean, it's, it's, it's getting there, it's getting there.
We're working on it.
I have one question. I know we mentioned the power washing for the buildings and I think the parking lots. We heard anything back on those yet?
We have awarded the contractor ProSoak. But with testing going on and all that, I met with him last week. And we decided to wait until summertime when all the testing is finished. Because pretty much every school's got something going on. We talked about going ahead and coming and doing this building before summer starts because, of course, no students here taking tests. So that will, that will be starting soon as, the day after they get out of school.
Okay. Thank you. So you're gonna power wash, you said, this building?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Any other questions?
And you asked something about the, okay. What was the other question?
Oh, parking lots, the striping. I think you've already updated us on the striping, didn't you?
On the striping?
Yeah, okay, oh, okay.
No, we haven't done anything on striping because we've got so many of them that need repair. If you just, if you stripe them, you just, you're strifing. If we do decide to repair them, we just wasted that money. So I've kinda held off on the striping part till we decide what we're gonna do as far as parking lots go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Taylor, yeah, I'm gonna click back to it real quick. Item number six, discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery. Review of expenditures, reimbursements payments for the project. Mr. Taylor, Guild, how you doing this evening and welcome to the district? Just fine, sir.
So really don't have any, the only update that we've got, I checked with Mima this morning. Tricia Cash is our Mima representative. She reached out to FEMA, that's exactly where we are. The reply that she got back from FEMA today was the, says category E, which is building still pending, CRC, review of applicant's bid tab. So they're still reviewing it. The last few weeks, they've asked for some additional information. We've emailed everything they've asked for immediately, the bid tabs, I guess. What appears they had done was just take an insurance estimate and use that to calculate the FEMA funding instead of taking actual bid tab. We took bids, actual project cost, we took bids on the re-roofing, the asbestos abatement, and the building repaired. So at least they're now reviewing those bid tabs that are the actual cost. I didn't get any timeframe.
Okay.
Again, I don't, would, I guess we're at their mercy to see what they come back with. If we don't agree with what they come back with, we're able to do two appeals and then go through to arbitration. At this point, I just, I don't know. They, with COVID, we weren't able to meet with them face to face and go through it and have a meeting. And, you know, it's just, just a lot easier when you sit down with somebody and go through it instead of doing remotely, or not even remotely, but I don't know who's reviewing it or what difference they have. But it's just, it made it hard to, to, to do anything. But, but I would like to go ahead, Ms. Cox, and go ahead, and if you wanted to schedule a workshop with the board. And so like for the board to see what we've done, what the cost, the costs actually are, what costs that we attribute to FEMA, and what costs, what costs we're anticipating that the, 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 the district to, to, to pick up. But we'd like to at least schedule an hour or so to go through the drawings.
Yes, sir.
The cost, everything else. So we know we have a new board member, but to go through those and exactly, so everybody understands exactly.
Where we are.
Yeah, where we are, what we're looking at.
Yes, sir. And, okay, we can do that. And another thing that I'd like to add to it while we are scheduling special call meeting board is if Mr. Little, with his kind heart, would attend with us also, that, he is, if, if he would also attend, so we can look at the, the figures and things during this meeting that we were discussing about the sports complex, the road area, the stadium, drive and whatever, if we could just look at these things as that and Hunt and try to do it all in the same meeting, this would be very much appreciated on my part. What do you all think, board? So we can see if we're gonna move forward with it, check it off, we're not gonna do this now, we'll wait until next year. Check this off, we do this now or whatever. Just get a view for exactly where we are moving on a timeline or on a checklist or anything like that. Right now, we're looking at, I don't have a particular date in mind for the special call meeting, but I know you all have very busy, busy schedules. Dr. Labatt, Dr. Brown, Mr. Himpel, after graduation? That worked for me. After graduation, what about, would it be, it would be evening? So the, the week after graduation, the only day that's not good for me is the 24th. So the, the week after graduation, the only day that's not good for me is the 24th. The week after graduation would be Monday, the 23rd through Friday, the 27th. The only day that I'm not available in the evening is, uh, the 24th.
Monday or Wednesday works for me.
Monday, Wednesday?
Or Thursday.
Thursday.
Wednesday.
Ma'am?
You're saying the 20th, the week of the 23rd, right?
Okay, Ms., Ms. Rogers, I did not write down your schedule yet for the, uh, budget, uh, review because you were, you know, you wanted us to work around. We were gonna look at that some more. So I didn't write it in my, in my day planner as a specific right now. Is that alright? Okay. For the, uh, calendar, we're gonna look at those dates with Ms. Rogers a little bit more in depth. I'll talk to you all board members and let you know, okay? But, um, so Monday, the 25th or the 26th? I know you don't wanna do it on Friday evening. Okay, the 23rd? Is the 23rd?
Monday, the 23rd.
Yes, sir. What time?
Well, I was.
What time is good? Dr. Dito? Five.
You guys get started without me.
Five o'clock, what about Mr. Sparks?
Oh, no, I'll be coming in a little later. You go, go ahead and get started and I'll just have to come in a little later.
I know.
Will we have it here or will it be?
Well, we can do it here or we can do it in the boardroom, the other boardroom, small boardroom.
If you do it here, I can tune in, you know, until I get from the office here.
We can do it in there, too.
Okay, alright.
What, what time can you make it?
Um, it's, on a Monday, it's always up in the air for me. Six o'clock is always pushing it for me on Mondays. Yeah. So that's why I say if you guys wanna go ahead and get started, you know, I can tune in until I get here. Yeah.
We can do it at teens, right? In there, we've done that before.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, Monday, the 23rd, six o'clock? Six o'clock, Monday, the 23rd? Okay. Alright, uh, who's going for five o'clock then? Alright, Mr. Sparks is best at six.
Can you do Wednesday?
He can join in at five.
I can join in virtually. You know, if you wanna start at five, that's fine.
The last update we did, were you at the last update?
Say it again.
Were you at the last update?
Yes.
The one that was, when I reviewed everything at Cook?
No, no, no. The Hunt update?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Sparks need to be in on this one. We, yeah, just, just hold on down.
So what time are we looking at?
Alright, it's gonna take us a minute. If we do six o'clock, five thirty, I'll go in between. You all wanna do five thirty? Five thirty. Alright, Monday, the 23rd at five thirty. Okay. So that's a special call meeting? Five thirty and we'll be in the small boardroom. I just called it the boardroom. Yeah. Okay, I see what you're saying. So, so we'll talk about the strategic plan. I just put it in here real quick. We're gonna talk about the strategic, the little, um, capital improvement with the complex and then Hunt. And then Hunt. I don't know, but this is a needful meeting. Board, this is something we need to do seriously. So if you wanna bring some lunch or whatever or dinner, five thirty, you may have already eaten. I'm gonna be cheap. Okay, moving right along. Thank you all very much, I appreciate this. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, drive carefully.
A question.
Oh, excuse me, Dr. Schumay has a question.
Just a quick question. You mentioned that during COVID and you thought part of the problem that we are trying to straighten out now is that you weren't able to meet face to face. Right, is there any chance that they can be done now?
Right now, they're still, they still have three centers, they are just out there, still do it remotely.
Okay.
You know, I, I have to go through M E M A to talk to FEMA. So it's frustrating for me, I reached out to Tricia, she's good. I still had to reach out to Tricia, she reached out to FEMA and then get back to me. So it's kinda, well, we should be able to get through.
But there's no, no opportunity to do that? There no interest or?
Uh, I feel that, well, tomorrow, I'll reach out to M E M A again, just to be tempted to do that.
Okay. I mean, if that, we know that was a stumbling block. If they would do that, that might help.
Oh, yeah, but they, they, they could come here and, and see the facility, go through it.
That would be the answer.
Yeah, and that's the normal procedure, right? Okay. Yeah, they need to get back to normal procedure, just my opinion.
Yeah, that's all our opinion. They need to get back to normal and come walk through Hunt, so that they'll see for themselves that over the years, it's deteriorating also.
Yeah, every day.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, Monday. Now we'll move to our contract renewals updates, item five. But do you have any questions concerning the, uh, contract list, the updates? Moving right along to number six, consideration and a discussion to approve the 2022, 2023 board review and regular board meeting dates. Requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young. I'll make the second, any discussion?
So we can just procedurally, as soon as we set that July date, we can just go back and plug that in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussions? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, consideration and a discussion to change the name of the Columbus Success Academy to Union Success Academy. And, um, I request an emotion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Schumay. I'll make the second, any discussion?
Uh, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, with the changing of the name becoming Union, once we get Hunt back online, is the Success Academy gonna remain in Union?
So, the, the current plans is that it was, and, um, I think, uh, from a facility standpoint, like, the Hunt, the facility did not dictate the programming.
Right, right.
So it's Columbus Success Academy, because we have all students from every campus coming to there, coming to them. So we won't do a formal change. This will just be, you know, Union.
Your Union Success.
We never called it the Hunt Success Academy.
No.
Right.
We just called it the Columbus Success Academy, it was, the facility was at Hunt. So, it won't change the programming.
Right, right, okay, okay.
But the name will change. It won't be Hunt. It won't be Columbus Success Academy. It would be Union Success Academy. And, um, when you're saying if, uh, once the facility at Hunt is up and running again, uh, from the reports that we've been getting, the, uh, that area is gonna be used for one of our grades from the middle school. That was, that's my understanding.
Six grade.
And that the alternative school will remain there at Union Academy. Union Academy has so much history that the building, if we still say is Union Academy, but what we have to do is recognize that verbally as well as in writing, that that's still Union Academy. Twenty years from now, that school's name would just go on down from Union and it would be known totally as Columbus Success Academy, Columbus High School, Columbus Middle School. You won't hear Union anymore. Unless you continuously verbalize this, it will stay into existence. And that's too much history to just let it drain out.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the physical facility, well, what, what are we changing here? Are we changing the name of Columbus Success Academy, which is a program to Union Success Academy?
Well, I don't look, look at it as being just a program, because Union is a school.
Right, and that's what I'm asking, is the?
You know, just like the high schools. So high schools have programs within that particular school. You're gonna have the, say, for example, uh, the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
You have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, music, art, you got programs in there. Alright, the alternative school itself is, instead of saying alternative, the district several years ago selected to say success, because that made it positive throughout the states. I'll say Mississippi, states throughout the nation started using success instead of academy. But the pra, my purpose, and even talking about this, is that Union Academy itself is the name of that school. And regardless as to the type programs that are housed within that school, it's still Union Academy. And if we do not say Union anywhere in the wording for it, it will be soon forgotten. We're talking about history.
No, no, I under, I, I understand that. What is the name of the building?
It's Union Academy.
It has, okay, that's all I needed to know.
So what, that's my question. What are, what are we naming? Because are you changing the name of Union Academy? Like Franklin Academy, Union Academy? That, that's, that's what I'm asking. Are we changing the name of the school?
Oh, okay. God, thank you. Well, that's, that's what I, okay, that, that's what I thought.
And I think that's what she and I had, that's what you and I had discussed.
Yeah. It's simple to me.
I just wanted to make clear that we weren't, Dr. Schumay was asking, I was just making sure it was understood that it's not, we're not changing the name.
Of Union Academy, yeah, okay.
It's basically the brand, it's branding.
Well, no, that, that's, I was confused there.
It was Hunt Alternative School, it was Columbus Success Academy, which we all know, alternative kinda has a negative connotation.
Right, right, okay.
Columbus Success Academy is being rebranded as, it won't, the motion is to rebrand it as Union Success Academy. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's the only thing that, uh,
Okay, hey, I'm all in favor of that, yeah, okay.
When someone says, um, uh, what do you all use Union for then? You know, they don't look at Union as being a school that's being used in the Columbus Municipal School District. That's why I say that about the history of it.
So this will accomplish two things. It will keep the Union, or it'll keep the Success Academy, but it'll also keep it, that it's at Union.
It will keep Union Academy alive.
Absolutely, no, I mean, that's, I have a total agreement with that. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
That's it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Okay.
So we've got a motion in a second.
So we'll, we're, did I?
We got a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second, okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Okay, great, good.
It is unanimous. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen.
No, thanks for catching that.
Alright, we'll move right on. I'm gonna find my place here, please. The, uh, goal updates. Our goal updates, we'll look at the, uh, student attendance. Do we have any discussion, uh, board? Your student attendance report, the safety reports. I'm gonna move right along. The discipline reports for the middle school, the high school, Cook, Fairview, Franklin, Sale, Stokes, C H, C H S and C M S. Dropout reports, the safety report, number of accidents in the school. Do you have any questions, concerns or comments? We're moving right on to item D, superintendent updates and reports. Dr. Labatt.
First, uh, the strategic plan. We'll, we'll review that at the May 23rd meeting, um, in hope for us to, to get input from the board for, um, final adoption in the June board meeting. So, um, if you have any questions or concerns, before then, just contact me. Um, but we have allowed the principals, assistant principals, um, teacher advisory, the management team, um, to take, um, a deep look, deep dive into the action steps. So, um, if we need to recalibrate anything, just let us know. Alright, get through this data. Where's the mantra this way? This is our drive developed, uh, that we talked about extensively with Dr. Martin. Um, the new strategic plan, um, develop data-driven decisions to increase student achievement and growth, recruit and retain highly effective teachers and staff throughout the district, innovate strategies to improve rental and community engagement, value fiscal prudence and transparency, and establish a safe environment for all students and staff. That's the five-year plan. So, these are the people we included in the report to establish the goals and the action steps. Um, the data-driven decisions, we continue to look at our proficiency comparison report. We, um, met collectively in January to discuss strategic plans for our most recent benchmark data and strategize implementing effective practices within the school environment with teachers, focusing on instruction and improvement of instruction, reflective teaching, um, database decisions, thorough, uh, grade-based instruction and standard-based instruction. We continue to have this benchmark diagnostic data. Our teachers are doing a great job of, um, really concentrating on those standards, um, and completing the curriculum. Uh, we are in testing season and so we started quite early. And as we get through to the data, I'll show you what we've done on the third grade reading gate assessment, which we just got those results when, Friday. Okay, and I want to thank Deb for putting all this stuff together. She, she consolidated our strategic plan data, got that together for us, um, and all, all the data information. Alright, um, uh, principal data strategy, I mean, I talked about it. Our assessment reports, we continue to look at that. Um, our MAP comparative to data, really concentrating on our accountability. Um, we really focus on, once we get a benchmark test, putting the data inside the accountability model to see where we would be at, on demand at this point in time, as far as, uh, assessment, um, on the MAP test. We continue to focus on standard-based instruction. We worked really hard and got a lot of teacher input for our highly quality instructional material, which is making sure there's grade, grade level and it's, um, curriculum focused on our, our standard. And then we've had a great year of focused professional development, thanks to that department. Alright, this is just copy and paste 20 to 21. We hadn't had accountability, so it just copied over. This year, we will have 2022. Any questions? Alright, that's our current, we just copied and pasted from 19 over, cause we didn't have accountability. This is our reading proficiency, um, based on our most current assessment. And 2019, that's our last benchmark test. And that E L S was taken what month? In March, March. So hopefully we made some gains by. Yeah, good. So we'll do a third, third look before they leave. We'll be able to take that data into, into, um, next year. But we will get a more definitive, um, picture. But we will get a more definitive picture from the state assessment. We'll have both. That's our current ELS data, the state, and then where we are. And that's of March of this year. I would say, too, that principals have done a great job of having a thorough and detailed focus on the standards that were, had deficiencies in March. So, it was a concentrated effort on making sure that we not only finished the math curriculum, because that's always the curriculum that we're still completing before May, and, but also to make sure that some of the issues, the deficits we had within ELA, that those are targeted to between March and the April assessment. So, really focus and concentrate it, thorough, in-depth, standard-based instruction. Math instruction, that was our biggest dip during the hybrid system. We're marching, we're building up a little bit higher. This was in March, so real concerted effort. One thing about this number is you have to realize is that the curriculum is not finished by this time. We really never finished the math curriculum until the end of the year. ELA, we tend to finish earlier, but math, we generally go to the entire year. So, that's our current levels from 2021. ELS is the March assessment. 2021 is our hybrid year. And that's proficiency. Alright. This is history proficiency, and this is December assessment? Oh, okay, it's 2021. That's all year, yeah, okay. Okay, alright, so that's 2021, 21.4 for history. And they will test this year. Any questions about history proficiency?
No, I'm good.
Science proficiency. We are at 27.4. We had gotten up to 47.9 2019, up to 25.2. ELS in the fall was 27.4. We hope to see some gains there, in traction there with science. Any questions about the science assessment? If I feel that there is an area that we may not get back to where we are in 2019, it'll probably be science. You agree, Deb? Yeah. Just because of the strong focus on ELA and math and the deficits we had there from the hybrid system. Alright, this is science proficiency. This is the growth calculations thus far with ELS from March. So, we're heading back to 2019, right below it. We had probably about six weeks to go when we took the ELS test. So, we should make way there. Reading growth. Really close to where we are in 2019. Let me just say something, too, to get back to where we were in 19. It's tremendous amount of work from the teachers and principals. And we look at the number of days that teachers, I mean, students were in school. In hybrid system, they were 90 days if they never got quarantined or they didn't get the virus. And even from March to May, it's just a different date. So, this is really, really a lot of hard work from teachers and students and principals to get back to where we at that quickly. You know, I'm gonna think about, they had a whole half a year. And then this year, we had more quarantines and COVID cases than ever. Shorter time in quarantine, but more kids out than both years combined. But, so this is a lot of great work from teachers doing hard work. So, I hope they beat it. You know what I mean, that they have years gained, that they get beyond what we did before. Excited about that. See where we are with math growth. We already have outgrown the last, almost since 2016. Probably will have the highest growth in math, which is a good thing. Done that, and we still had six weeks to go, hadn't finished the curriculum. Great job there, teachers and students. Math growth. Really excited about that. Tremendous amount of growth. Biggest deficit area. This is the lowest, um, lower 25. And we're right at where we were, and this was in April, so we should exceed that. And that's us with the state. Looking really good. Especially with six to eight weeks out when we took the assessment. And focus intentional, concentration on standard-based instruction. Math, almost already there. Hopefully, we can even surpass 2016 with that. I'll put my money on them. That we will. This is low math growth, the lower 25%. Already exceeded 2019 at 55. The state is 59. We'll probably beat the state in that, too. Exceed the state average last year. But you also gotta expect the state will grow, too. Just in comparative. Readiness, okay, that's our ACT. 15.9. This is a very, very good class. We hope to exceed 15.9 for this year. Have really strong focus in making all of our students go through the ACT class. Really strong with the ACT Academy. Am I saying, right, is the ACT Academy? All of our students are running through that, so we hope to get back. We were really on the trend mark to get to the state average before the pandemic, to get to the, the 19 level. So, hopefully, we can creep up this year and then make a strong, strong appearance next year with ACT. But I'm very proud of our scholars and the work they've done, the extra time they've put in for ACT, work keys, and for the ASFAB, as we saw this evening. Alright, college and career readiness. That's just a comparative through the state. And that's ACT, right? They're all the indicators that we got awards for today. National certification now, work keys. So, I think we're gonna do a great job with dual enrollment with some of the programming we've done. So, our dual enrollment, our acceleration rate is usually really high. You'll see it in the next slide. There's our acceleration rate, 68.4. I think with all the program we have this year, we should be way close to 2019, if not at 2019. Any questions? That's the state average, and that's where we are. That one, we're on top. We have one of the highest acceleration rates. Dual enrollment. State is the orange, we're the blue. We should make that purple, by the way. You think? Maybe next time. Alright, graduation rate, the highest graduation rate. Last seven, eight years. Very proud of the Columbus High School teachers, team, special education, all the teachers that have worked diligently to get 83.47 of our students in graduation for this year. We pray to see similar numbers next year. Continue to work hard, to get them across the stage. It's an audacious task, and you're very much appreciated and valued. So, thank you to all the teachers and for all the staff, K-12, who've worked hard to get them, because the most important thing is this right here, and how they do post-graduation. So, excellent job there. Any questions about graduation rate? Alright, yeah, see the state and see where we are. We're gonna make that purple, Deb. It's petty, though, do you? Might as well stick to our colors. Alright, purple and gold. Alright, this is our third-grade reading gate. Alright, so this is, this is data right off the press, right? This is, well, let me go over this. This is 2021. We were at 54.21, that was last year. That's, that's our third-grade rate. That's the percentage of kids that passed the test in the third grade, 54.2, okay? And... This is... Pre-K, okay. The pre-K assessment. We had 40, 57.5 below and 42.5 at or above the indicator for kindergarten, pre-K preparation, correct? That is broken down to the reading categories for the pre-K assessment, which talks about the early emergent reader, the late emerging, the transitionary, and the probable reader. So, we had a lot of, lot of kids in the late and emergent reader category. Alright, so recruiting and retaining highly effective teachers throughout the district. Our national board certification program continues to go well. That's for our tenured teachers. Excellent program. Excited about the teachers that are going through the process of reflective teaching from an instructional standpoint. It's a way for us to retain our teachers who have been tenured and using SFA funds to leverage that program. Future Teacher Club, they continue to focus on becoming future teachers. This is a collaboration with the Mississippi University for Women. We have, I think, approximately 30, seven kids, seven, seven kids in our dual enrollment program, taking the courses that we align when we developed this program in 2020. Mentor mentee program. We work with our first-year teachers, and they have a mentor. These are both paid mentor and mentee that's come through the Board, and they're focused on reflective teaching practices. We did buy a program called Atlas that they look at quality instruction and do reflective practices. We asked very in-depth, detailed question. This is all program developed during 2020, 2021. And so, we're working with our new teachers. And that's when we realized that 70, 70, I think, almost over half of our teachers are less than four years' experience. That makes a really big difference in instruction, okay? Continue to do the signing bonuses. We had MDE here to work with our mentor mentees and our students. Our students blew the top off. They were very amazed by looking at some of the rubrics and instruction. They're very serious about getting into the profession. We realized that's gonna be a pipeline for teachers to come back in the community and teach. Signing bonuses and then scheduled professional time. The calendar matters. We do have to look at new and innovative ways on how we look at instruction in order to retain. There's been a mass exodus of the profession, and we just have to think differently about how we do instruction. And we're probably gonna look at some more innovative ways to give them more professional time off to work on their, on their craft, because it's important. And in order to retain teachers, we're gonna have to be innovative. We're gonna have to think outside the box. We're gonna have to create career ladders outside of just the coaching positions to, to get them to, to work with other teachers. And so, some of those efforts and innovation will be discussed in detail. You know, as I go to some of these places around the country, I've seen some things that are happening that are creative. It's a big national push to ensure that we retain teachers. But we really gonna have to look at instruction very differently, be very open-minded about the time they spend and hours they spend in the classroom, and how it can be more effective and efficient and retain their time and give them more professional time off. So, the Wednesday may seem like something that was minor, but it's a big deal to teachers. We hope to be able to put more programs and processes in place so they have more structured professional time to do things that they need to do. Which is, we're in a recalibration in public education, and we just need to be open to the ideas. And we'll continue to get feedback from the teacher advisory council on what we can do to make them happier in their craft. We are, we're in a battle of the hearts of educators because the work of the last two years have been daunting. And I can't say it enough, I would just like to thank all of my teachers, my faculty and staff for working March, May with mostly all the school districts and the state with close. We were still working, still planning. Thank you for having one of the best implementation plans and coming back to a hybrid system. Thank you for recalibrating over and over again and working tires' hours. Thank you for staying in the building and staying focused with COVID and some of you sick and family members sick. If I don't tell you enough how much I appreciate you. I appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate all the principals and hard work you've done and the work that you continue to do.
Dr. Labat.
Yes.
Before you move to the next slide, I do have a question here. I'm looking at the recruit and retain highly effective teachers and throughout the district. The TIP program, we still have that in place, right?
Yes, yes, that's a policy, so you have to work on that.
Alright, right.
Can you take policy with it?
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yes, I need to add that to there.
Okay.
Because that is an incentive. So, I'll add that to the slide. Thank you, because I can't remember. We're doing so many great things, you know, sometimes we do. Yeah, awesome. Yeah, but I'll add that to the slide. Thank you. So, this is our innovative strategy to improve parental engagement. We had 24 parent meetings in 2021. Most of our, we recorded district parent meeting with on-demand access. War tours, we'll continue to do the war tours in August. We'll start off, we continue with our parent reading liaison meetings. That's great ideas and programming from MDE, Mississippi Department of Education. Lose some focus, concentrate a thing. Parents are really enjoying those, attending those really, really well. We also are working through community libraries with our Adopt the Block program, putting literacy out, really focused on getting some things out there. Title I meetings are always great. Community accountability meetings, those have been phenomenal. Our teachers, our principals and teachers are still working through the pillars. We're just good style instructional practices for schooling. I think y'all have seen the indicators. We think that's a very good process for looking at the whole child. We have to remember that accountability is a very narrow focus of very few days of students. It really kind of describes, tries to describe a student, a community and school district that... But it's, you just have to remember accountability is a very narrow focus, very short window. I guess you really can't, you can't really see a full picture from that assessment. So, we, community accountability gives us that opportunity to look at everything the school district is doing that's positive, that's good, that's great for community, for development of the whole child, and from a very broad focus and not a narrow focus. Columbus Air Force Leadership Series continues to go strong. We are working on some sustainability with Columbus Air Force Base, continue these programs. Every couple of years, they change out, so we want to make sure that some of the great programming that we've done stays within the district. We are very proud of our JRRTC program and what it has done, and we continue to build partnerships with the Air Force Base to continue to give our students the opportunities and excellence that you saw today with ASFAB. And we've had 22 parent meetings thus this year, it's May, and the year's not over. So, we'll continue to promote our families and the hard work they're doing in community and continue to reach out and make sure that our families feel valued and that we give them the support they need and we understand and reciprocate that community and school relations is important and the value of the Columbus Municipal School District. This is just some of the meetings we've had. We have finalized the contract, I mean, the agreement with John Hopkins and the US Department of Education on the leadership of Ms. Kim Williams. I didn't say Gardner, and name has changed. And she, we've had a couple of meetings. We are gonna really be working with the gross mindset with our eighth-grade students, in-depth social-emotional wellness programming with our eighth-grade students, excited about that. And then our recent CBA energy right partnership, really focused on energy conservation at four of our schools. We'll have some in-depth analysis on how we can be more effective as it relates to lowering our carbon emissions, which is an important aspect. Thank you to Mr. Little for being a part of that team and for all the schools that participate. Will be Stokes Beard, the middle school, the high school, and Franklin Academy. Any questions? Alright, these are just on the action steps that's on your, on your strategic plan, so I won't go over those. So, these are our recent gun violence statistics. As we continue working with the community, understand that we value our families and continue to work diligently. Work diligently to, with our community. We understand that a healthy community is a healthy school district, and we'll continue to work on community projects that support our, our students in their experiments as they deal with trauma in the community from these statistics. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Labat. Next, we'll add item number 10, open forum policy BCBD. Do we have anyone in, ma'am? I'd like to note that we do have a policy and welcome everyone that is here for our open forum. The public comments during the board meetings is relative to our policy BCAF, public comments at board meetings. And although the board will not have dialogue back and forth, but we are here to listen. And our superintendents will respond and get back with you on different things. But we want you to really understand that at this time. The limitations for your public comments is three minutes per individual. And this is board policy. Although we do sit and listen and be as patient as possible. Because I thoroughly want to hear your concerns as to why you are here tonight. So I do welcome you, Ms. Cor Williams. Okay, how you doing? Is that Cor Williams Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Okay, my concerns and issues is with the school at Thaville.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma.
Thank you, we just talked this, we got to order to make sure that the minute did not talk directly about personal.
Yeah, I didn't, no, I'm not.
Well, I wanted to thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I'm not going to call any names because I don't want to try to think, but the thing is, is the leadership. The dictations as to what teachers can be held accountable for things. My child, the way my child was talked to a couple of weeks ago is not acceptable. I wouldn't talk to no one's child or my child like that. My child was degraded, belittled, and her self-esteem was crushed. My child now cries because she don't want to go into the classroom. But she has no choice because this is the end of the year now. So we have no choice. I've been having a few issues back and forth with things at the school. I made, I've, I've been very vocal about it, extremely vocal about it. Because my thing is, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And if you can't stand up for your children and for the children around your children or the children that's in this district or the school with your children, you're doing nothing. And I firmly believe in, it take a village to raise a child. In order for our children to succeed, we need to come together and try to fix what's wrong. Now, my other problem is with the substitute that's in there. This is the end of the year. We, school is out on the twenty-fourth. Today is the ninth. My child been in second grade since school started. The sub came in in January. On today, we just received this, they, they have to learn their multiplication tables from zero to six by Friday to have a quiz. Well, my child have three different disabilities that's going on. And I don't see how that's going to work and how it's going to be possible. But it's not saying I'm not going to go over them with her because I am. But the thing of it is, if she want to integrate this with us, she should have started this a couple of months ago. Not at the door, we're fixing to leave. Now, I don't know if this grade they get for this test is going to carry over to third grade. And if they got some way to carry over, I don't know. And they're going to give them some extra points for third grade to do this in a couple of weeks? I don't know, but I just don't see how it's extremely possible for all of them. Some of them maybe. But there are a few like my child, I'm not saying that she can't do, because she tries her best to do whatever you give her. Whatever task you put in front of her, she's going to do it. But I don't see her comprehending all that in just two weeks. You can't cram that into her in two weeks. She has dyslexia. She has language disability, speech disability, and she's A D, A D H D. Now, with all that going on, and then I have two more children, I have one that's on low spectrum autism as well. How am I going to get this done in four days? I don't know, but we're going to get some, she's going to know some of them, but not all of them probably, but we're going to get some of them done. Another thing. If, we have a shortage of teachers in the district, not just the district in the state. I have seen some wonderful, wonderful, wonderful teachers that have walked away. And they've walked away due to personal reasons, dealing with health and stuff because of the stress they're under. And I'm an advocate for the teachers as well. I'm not going to call any other teacher's name because that's not what I do. But the thing of it is, more parents need to stand behind the teachers. I want y'all to listen to the teachers. Ask them personally, ask them to write a list of what's going on without signing their name to it. Then y'all would know what's going on inside the building when you're not in there. Because see, you only get the right side, the left side and the right side. You know, you got to kind of figure out what's the truth when you get in the middle. Because when you hear both stories, you can figure out the truth a little bit. But if you ask the teachers to give you some, to give you stuff that's going on blankly without signing their name to it, you'll find out a lot of things that's going on inside the schools. That you're not seeing, the parents are not seeing, that the children are seeing. Because my child have come home to me a couple, two times and told me that her teacher broke down and cried right there in front of class because of the way she was talked to. And they had to console, a ten-year-old consoling a teacher. The nine and ten-year-old shouldn't have to console their teacher because she's feeling some type of way by what was just said to her. And that's not how we should do it. I just say, want y'all to take into consideration, when y'all put people in positions at these schools, look more deeper. Pop in, take questionnaires from the parents, the students, the teachers. Most importantly, the students and the teachers. The parents are going to fall behind with it too. But just take into consideration with them and ask them questions. Then you will know. Because everybody that seems like they might be the material that you need to lead your school, they are not it. Because you always got, you just can't look at the cover of the book, you got to read the whole book to understand what's going on. And I love to read. So I'm going to start at the beginning, I'm going to go to the end. Because I want to know what's going to happen, what's going on. So I need y'all to just take the time, ask your children, the, the students and the employees in each school to give you, to let you know what's going on. Ask them how they're feeling. Just take a little time to do a questionnaire and let it be mysterious. They don't have to leave no name or nothing. Just what school and they see. And then y'all could see what we see as parents, because I have other parents here as well. Y'all can see what we see as parents. And you will have the same outlook that we have. And maybe we can straighten some things up. Because the school my children, I loved that school, I loved it to death. But it ain't been the same. This has been by far the worst school year ever. And, and I hate saying that because I have had a child that's been threatened, a child that's been torn down. And of course, my little one, she just, all happy, go lucky, she, everything's happened for her. She's enjoying pre-K. But the other two, it's a, it's a battle and a struggle because they came back off a year and a half of not being in school to full-blown in there. And without consistency of teachers and I always have to have different subs or different people just teaching, they're not going to get what they need. My kids are missing stuff that even though I'm going over, and during the summer, we do stuff during the summer to keep them ahead, they are still missing stuff in between. They missed half a kindergarten and half a second grade. Where in a tire is the first and third grade, so we just got to figure out some strategies to help our kids, not just mine, all of our kids. And whatever y'all decide to do, I am willing to work with the district, I'm willing to work with anybody, especially when it comes to children. I'm willing to work with them. I've worked with kids myself. And I know how hard it is, especially, I've worked with small kids that's under three. And some are three. And I understand that. But if I can deal with twenty-some kids at a time in a classroom with another teacher. Now, they got, older kids is a little more easier, but you got some that need a little more help. And I just want y'all to take that time and understand what we're trying to say to you. Because without us, the district is going to fall. And we don't want to fail. We do not want to fail as a district entirely. We don't want the state to have to take us over because they're not, we're not getting what we're supposed to get to on these tests. Now, my child, when she was in third grade, she did the test last year, that's my ten-year-old did. And she excelled, I mean, she, she did better than the district and the state on the test. She outscored them all. But it wasn't counted because they was out. So, but you still have more kids that's just like that. If y'all just give them a chance, that's the only thing I want y'all to do. And as far as graduation for the high schools, I have one over there. I know the graduations that morning at ten o'clock, but could y'all take into consideration, some kids have health issues and they can't be in the heat? Because it's going to be hot that morning, extremely hot. And with health conditions, some of them won't be able to stay in the heat. And we have some that do have health conditions. They won't be able to withstand being out there in the heat that long with those capping, the cap the guys on, the black pants or the black dresses or whatever they have on.
First out, I want to thank you for talking to me last week and detailing somebody's concern. I want to thank you for being an advocate for your children. You're their first and their best advocate, so I appreciate you giving me that information. I did tell you that I'll be following up with Dr. Dito and working through some of these issues to try to find out what we can do to move forward together. Also, I wanted to let you know that I recognize, I thank you for your professionalism and coming here and addressing the issues that are concerned you as a parent. I appreciate you. And I will definitely get back with you by the end of the week as promised.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll, we will definitely get back with you. Thank you again.
Yes, ma'am, and I do thank y'all and appreciate y'all for hearing me out, as well as Dr. DeVito, because I spoke with him a couple of times. And as well as yourself, I just appreciate everything y'all have done. Thank y'all so much.
All right, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you for waiting too patiently. Thank you, really appreciate it. Brought a lot to mind. Okay. We're moving on to the office of the superintendent, Dr. Cherie LeBott. A, school operations, superintendent travel goal one, travel reports and reviews. Dr. LeBott?
Had the opportunity to, to attend the Spring Thought Leadership Symposium with several superintendents across the country in Chicago, Illinois earlier last week. And really talked about systematically creating a system of belongingness and student voice for students within the school district. Really have worked, and I'm glad that, that she's here, working on getting a platform with on-demand responses from students and teachers that statistically kind of merges all the comments together in real time. Ms. Cornwall is working on that contract right now. So we are working on making sure that we digitally can get responses from, for all things from students about their work samples. So what she's talking about is an important part of us moving forward as a district is, is allowing students to have more voice and choice in what, what they're doing. You know, even as I think about the strategic plan, if we could put it off another month, you know, allowing students, us use that platform, Ms. Cornwall, to see what they think about the goals. Get their input about what they feel about it, because the goals are about them. And so student agency and voice is going to be a big part of what we're doing. We are getting ready to do some innovation hubs, social emotional hubs at the schools. And we really want our students to have a lot of voice in, in what, what's happening within the school environment. So I'm, I'm glad that she brought that up because they'll be an important part of us progressing forward. We also talked about making, I talked about that earlier, more innovation in how we school, how we teach to meet the needs of students, teachers because of burnout. Just understand that, you know, every superintendent that got up had thirty or forty openings. You know, this is not anything that's, that's just Columbus. There's just a lot of issue, a lot of fatigue, a lot of emotional issues in dealing with the last two years. I think that if, if we connect really well, we, we'll understand that this, this has been some audacious work. And it's just been very tiring. And we just got to have, give them every reason to hang in there. You know, we got a raise from the state, that's important. But creating an environment here, you know, to make sure they want to stay, you know, we have to continue to work on those things. But having flexibility and more professional time for them, more time off, more scheduled breaks, I think that's going to be an important part of retaining a teacher. You notice as I spoke to students, I call them scholars. We have to affirm a belief system in, in what they can and will be able to do. And so you'll see me address them even at graduation as scholars because that's who they are. And we have to affirm that. And I just, I hope the board stays with me in, in making sure we, we relay that message to them, not only here, but in the community, that they are scholars. We, I will work more in-depth with our new H R director and ask that you stay with her. She does have a consultant, she's done an amazing job about us getting some more statistical analysis so we can gauge where we are. She's working diligently to get that work done so we can address some more of our teacher shortages. So we're happy about that. We talked about the her and kind meant for superintendents all over the state. You know, it's not a one person, it's not me, just, you know, things that have happened through with superintendents across the country. It's been very polarizing political environment for everybody. And it was good to be around the superintendent that, that, that shared issues and, and progress and working forward in the next couple of years. And really trying to get people to stay in. So it's, it's at every level that people are walking away because of what's happened the last two years. Just focusing on our systems is something that we believe in. I think we've done some create and innovative programs here in the district. I want to make them more intense, more in-depth as we start working on our social emotional wellness. That's the reason for the social emotional hubs. One thing I think was a weakness is that we didn't, we focused on the kids, not as much as on adults. So these social emotional hubs for adults are going to be great in each school. Them finding a place of, of retreat during the school day that they can go, that's private, that's, that's away from students and they can relax and reflect. So we're looking forward to getting their input as far as allowing them to do that. We are doing a lot of great things that people are doing on the national level here in Columbus. And we'll continue to work together as a team to, to do more innovative practices to make sure that we continue to give students voice and focus on teachers. And the quality of instruction that they get. And them as a whole person, not just on what they're doing, but them as individuals. I then had the opportunity to attend the computational thinking pathways for the state. And in both situations, able to work in depth with policies related to the state and state law with computer science. Really had some in-depth, great conversation with Alabama and California. Really proud of what we've done and where we are as a state as it relates to computational thinking. I am on the strategic planning team for the state. Really got some innovation practice on how to get more students in, into computational thinking, how to have quality instruction with computation thinking. And how to make sure we continue to look at our laws and make sure that we stay abreast of what's changing and what's new. We, we will have an artificial intelligence position for the school district along with our coding position. As we continue to make sure that the law is implemented well. I, I want to recognize Devin Hill for all the hard work she's done. She keeps us ahead of the game in what we're doing as it relates to computer science and education. I think we've done a great job in the state in being a beacon for making sure our students have all the opportunities they can to learn at very high levels with our T E L S program. A P Computer Science at the high school. We have artificial tails exposure, but we will be working in detail of having a course within our I C T courses that really focus on A, on A I. And we'll continue to infuse coding, coding with the state law at the pre-K, I mean, at the K five level. So we're, we'll continue to make those innovations. But it was great to be with other states to see what they were doing. Arkansas is doing some great things, but they started relatively earlier than the state of Mississippi. But I am proud of where we are because the state is leading the pack in ensuring that our students get exposed to the future of a global and technology-driven world. Are there any questions?
Board, do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Thorough report, appreciate it. You very much. It's good to hear that when you said that about social emotional hubs for the teachers and the students.
I think we need one at central office, what do y'all think?
Probably central office also. That's, that's, that's a very interesting initiative, really is. And it's quite different. And now we'll move on to superintendent recommendations. Item one, consideration to approve the student transfers. Requesting a motion to approve the student transfers. So moved. Motion is made by Ms. Young requesting a second.
So moved.
Second by Dr. Schumak, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item number two. You all bear with me a moment here. Consideration and a discussion to approve of the raised salary schedules for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-eight and thirty-five. Requesting a motion for approval, board. So moved. The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, moving on. Moving on down to number three. Consideration and a discussion to approve our staff personnel items. Requesting a motion for approval. So moved. The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumak, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, moving on. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to congratulate Dr. Glendito for being chosen as the superintendent of Greenville School District. He's been a friend and colleague for over twenty years. We always promised ourselves we would let the word come between us. And we still have that friendship. I'm so proud of you and congratulations as you go.
And we still have that friendship. I'm so proud of you and congratulations as you go work with kids in Greenville, Mississippi. We're proud of you. Laissez le long pont en relais.
Yes, I am. So very, very proud of you. But you're going to be here. You're not leaving right away, are you?
He's trying to get all his work done and get out of here.
Is he?
We'll make sure.
Official and leaving are two different things. Okay, we understand official. Okay. So we must, yes, it is. Yes, it is. But I'm so very happy and proud of you. I really am. What better stage to be at? For growth. Wow. Know some of those board members down there. You all right. Okay, moving right along. I hate to go fast, fast, Board, but we're going to move on to item. Don't go out on the computer. Item twelve, Office of the Business Management. Am I doing right? All right, CMSD, Business Administration Discussion for the following items. Board, I'm looking at item for approval. Consideration to approve financials. We're going to look at item number one. The financial statements, which would be fund balance report, cash balance report, budget status report, monthly revenue budget report, monthly expenditures, certification and summary of reconciled bank statements. Requesting a motion for approval.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item G, Monthly Ad Valorem Tax Collection Analysis Report. Board, do you have any questions or comments? Ma'am?
Yeah, just a quick one. All right, we're at ninety-five point two. We've got three months to go, right? Ninety-five point two. All right.
That's great.
I just wanted to hear that. Music to my ears. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Moving on to item H, CMSD Fund Balance Trends. Any questions? Comments, Board? Bank Cash Balance Yearly Comparisons. The Athletic Event Report. Moving on to item K. Consideration and a discussion to approve our budget amendment. And item I, consideration and a discussion to approve fixed assets disposals. And item M, consideration to approve the claim docket. Requesting a motion for approval.
Uh, so moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Schumake. Come on, y'all. I'll make the second. Any discussion? If no, ma'am?
Just a quick one.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed there were a lot of budget amendments. And I can't remember last year. I'm assuming toward the end of the year, that's what happens. Okay. Because it is way above normal, but it's normal. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Schumake. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item F, Federal Programs and IDEA Monthly Financial Reviews. Board, do you have any questions concerning these reports? I hadn't had a good chance to look at them, but I'm sure we're moving towards not having any carryover, right? Yeah, great. It's good news. You don't want to send nobody no money back. Moving on to number two. The Budget Workshop Dates, which was for F schools for the school year twenty twenty-three. The Budget Workshop Calendar. Mrs. Rogers will get with us on some specific dates. You're looking at some dates now, Board, but we're going to have to make some changes in this format. And this is what I'll get with you personally and explain to you the reason why, okay? All right. Moving right along to our Consent Agenda Policy BCBL.
Ms. Cog.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I was going too fast. I'm sorry. Okay. The only question I had was the nineteenth. I think that's senior class night. Okay.
Yeah, I brought that to our attention. That's why you're going to look at it again because the nineteenth is not a good day.
All right, thank you.
Have we decided on a time or is that still TBD?
The time should still be in the afternoon.
Okay.
So if we do it in the afternoon, we know that that's for him, six o'clock.
Okay. It's really be in the small boardroom again?
It is.
Okay.
Okay.
And what I'm sure you do is just get with us, you'll work out some dates and then you'll get it back to us for, and then we'll approve it, you know, come to an agreement that that's when we'll meet. Is that all right with you all, Board? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Consent Agenda Policy BCBL. The, I'm going to ask you to please look at number one through eleven, please. All of these policies, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read over them. Pretty interesting reading. The revisions that are being made and keeping up with the policies and procedures for the district. Requesting a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify because I didn't quite catch it. We're going A through?
We're going through number eleven.
Eleven, okay, that would be whatever it is. Yeah, one, C, one through, one, C, one through eleven, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
We're going to stop there. Policy GBRHC.
All right, and that was Mr. Sparks and Dr. Brown?
Dr. Brown, discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you all. Hey, we got to get some coffee, don't we?
I have a question here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is this the final approval for the policies? It's a baiting, okay, all right.
Yeah. Oh, I'll go back and read that part. Consideration and a discussion to approve the following policies during the June thirteenth board meeting. But we have to approve this part of it. Then when June thirteenth come, we approve them finally. I'll slow down and read it. You all know when it get late in the evening, I start reading a little fast. Excuse me. All right, moving on to number two, is it? Consideration and a discussion to approve recommended changes on policy BBBD. Bond Members Effective Immediately. And also, number three. Consideration and a discussion to approve recommended changes for a policy GBRIA, which is the Family Medical Leave.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on. Sorry, Board. We're at, now we are for the Consent Agenda Items. Consideration to approve agreements, contracts, MOUs, out-of-state travel, field trips, and student transfers. I will ask you to approve number one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven at this time, please.
So moved.
Wait a minute, I'm going to go back and restate that. All right, for consideration to approve the agreements, contracts, MOUs, state of, out-of-state travel, field trips, and student travel. I'm going to ask for approval of number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Moving on down to number eight, number nine, number ten, and number eleven. You with me, Dr. Schumake? All of these are consent agenda items. Preferably you've had an opportunity to read over them. Requesting a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks, second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? Any discussion?
What's the process on destroying the cumulative folder?
That's item number three, destroying cumulative folders at the Columbus High School.
It's a state policy and we have to get Board approval so we, they have to keep records for a specific amount of time. And then once that happens, we have to get Board approval to destroy the records after a certain amount of years.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be advertised?
No. Yeah.
Because it's, I guess my question is the eighteen ninety-two. Okay, there were some documents that were pretty old in there, dating back to eighteen ninety-two. And then we kept them before and we're destroying them now. I mean, do we destroy the whole folder or part of it or? We don't know.
These were like IEPs, five oh four plans.
I think that's the special education one.
That's different.
Mr. Hemphill, and she is advertising that. That's in number nine.
Okay, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, she's advertising that for the special ed with number nine.
Different cumulative folder?
Yeah, it's eighteen ninety-two.
Which one is this?
That's number three.
Three, okay.
Yes, sir. Particularly concerned about the Union Academy records.
And the Hunt High. What is a cumulative folder?
It's just where we keep all the academic attendance and behavior records of the students.
Okay, so it's the actual student records?
Yes. That's cumulative folders.
That's it. All right, Union Academy is binders only, so I don't know what that means.
It probably has a history of people that attended Union Academy.
Okay.
Usually in the cum folder, like she said, you're going to have, when they first started school, there's a little sheet where it's filled out with the child's name on it and date of birth and first grade, what they did second grade, third grade while they were at Union Academy. May have some other little things that they have put back in there through history. You know, it may be something to look at, the Union Academy records, that the library may be interested in some of this because they have, what is that, their area, what they have?
That record, a lot of.
Yeah, and those records, it's like a vault.
Yeah, they keep a lot of the history for both schools, for Hunt and Union.
Yeah, and that vault, there is some strong historical items in there. And one thing that Mona mentioned is that they have not been keeping a lot of the black culture historical records because they have not had the opportunity to obtain them. So this may be something that maybe we can look at, Dr. LeBart. So what about if I request a motion to approve these items excluding number three until we do, what is it? Would it be advertisement?
Maybe we could just sort of say further investigation or something? Because I don't think.
Tending further investigation?
Or clarification or something?
Well, I'll just, I'll send you all the, I'll send you all the state procedures that we send to all the schools about what we can do to destroy records. And then you'll see the process and then we can go from there to make a decision next month. And then we'll get that to them Friday.
So one through eleven.
And tabled.
Except for number three.
Yeah.
Except for three, okay.
Yes, sir.
And something maybe additional information, it says binders only. That seems to describe that differently. I'm not sure what binders are.
Those cum folders.
Need to get more information.
Yeah, with that little information in it. Isn't that usually what's in there? You want to come in on, Dr. Brown?
It has like grades and access. It doesn't put address, but it gets your parent's name, birthday.
Test information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of these records now are kept electronically also too. It's probably, they're just dated in the closet or room taking space. From integrity standpoint, this is the best way to do it is to formally acknowledge to the public that we have them. I can tell you we had tons of cumulative records all throughout the buildings in Hunt before it went down that we probably never had the opportunity to do this with because they were destroyed and wasn't properly done like this formally in a board. And that's the correct in state law on how, or procedure on how we are supposed to expose the records.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you all. Moving right along to our dates to remember. We do have senior night.
Whoa, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh-oh.
I don't know if there was a reason or we didn't say anything.
No, hold on. I'm reading from this. Let me scroll on down. I'm going from this to this. I'm sorry. Okay, my numbers got changed around, but yes, sir, it is through number twelve. It's through number twelve, not eleven.
Okay.
Through twelve, not eleven.
All right.
Mr. Sparks, Ms. Brown, are you okay with that in your motion?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
You okay with it going through number twelve?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes. It's the same item, okay. Just me printing these things out crazy. Okay, the, next we'll move on to our dates to remember, policy BCBD. The academics, which would be our senior night. Congratulations though to our seniors. How many children, kids do we have graduating?
Surely we have around two hundred. I don't know the exact numbers, but. And I just want to say public record that the hump is under construction. So we had to improvise as best we could to accommodate our students, our scholars this year and having outside in the morning. Hopefully it will be cool weather. We've been blessed with not too hot weather thus far this year. But we have ordered some Javeltrons and some visually aesthetic things. You know, Mr. Sparks has a baby coming out, so he's excited. So we'll, we kind of go all out when they're not in the hump. Hopefully that will be done by next year and we'll be able to resume graduation festivities as normal. But we hope to make the best of it for, to celebrate our scholars and they, this most important day of the year.
So the senior night will be in the gymnasium.
Yes.
And the graduation will be at the football stadium. And Mr. Lee told us the other day he had Rogues together. He's going to do the Magic Geniact. He is. He's going to have things ready and there's a sixty percent day, Report Card Day, which is May twenty-fourth. The twenty-fifth is the teacher's last day and then Memorial Day. Number two is the Athletic CMSD Extracurricular Activities. Moving on to our board meetings. Board, please just interject if you have any questions. June eighth, the Board of Trustees Review Meeting, which will be here at Brandon at eleven-thirty. And our regular board meeting, which will be June thirteenth at six o'clock PM. Requesting a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Second by Dr. Brown. I heard it is.
We got a team here.
Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous. I know it is. All right.